We've been off.
Yeah.
We didn't have a meeting last week.
Yeah.
Before that.
Yeah, that's how come I was able to get away from that.
Yeah, that's right.
Without missing a meeting.
Oh, that's from Council of Barfers.
We left Wednesday, the day after the council meeting, and then we just got back today.
So you've gone almost a week then, huh?
Two weeks.
Oh, two weeks.
Thank you. All right. Okay, it's 5:00. We'd like to welcome Media, Channel 32 with Corey MacGurcy, and Temple Star with Marion Seeburn. Thank you so much for being here. We have quite a bit of an agenda today. We will start our meeting by asking Councilor Bantry to give us her prayer.
Thank you. Our Father in Heaven, as we bow our heads before Thee as council and administration and guests to this council meeting, we are indeed thankful for the positions that we hold as councilors and mayor. We ask that a blessing of direction will be given to each of us, that the decisions that we make will be made for the community, and that it will be appropriately made. We ask for thy guidance and direction in all things that we do as a council. In these things, we ask for, humbly, in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We need to adopt the agenda as given or put some additions if needed.
I'm moved we adopted the agenda.
Thank you. Councilor Edmonds, any questions? I think none. All in favor? Thank you. Just for the Media, Councilor Bantry is away on business in Toronto.
Barfus.
Sorry. He's away.
He's going over to Niagara Falls.
Anyway, he's in business in Toronto. That's the official position. And we want to congratulate Councilor Creed as being a Graffler one more time. Just came back from seeing his last neighbor. And Councilor Bantry, it's good to see you back with a tenant.
Thank you.
Okay, as you see, we have some delegations. One at 5:30, the other one is a public hearing at 6:00. Now, we might have to kind of play a little bit by ear depending when Eleanor Levitt comes to do a presentation. But 6:00, we will adjourn for the public hearing. So we need to adopt a minutes of the regular council meeting of March 11, 2014. I need a motion?
I had a.
Councilor Creed, you're making a motion?
Yes, I'll move it.
Okay. And Councilor Bantry, any questions?
Yeah, I, minor, minor. There was a little spelling error in Black Sands, right next to Randy Jensen's name. We can probably analyze. There was one other question I had, and it was more precedent. At 5:30, there's mention here that Counselor Barnes was excused and then returned two minutes later. I was just wondering if that was protocol? Did we put that kind of thing in there?
Yes, it's protocol. It has to be there.
Okay, just checking, just checking. I just thought that was unique for me.
Councilor Pivoy, I'm going to explain to you why. It's because if a vote was taken, all councilors have to be at the table to vote. Okay? You can't excuse yourself before a vote.
Right.
You have to be there.
Sure.
Sorry if I might, Madam Mayor. I'm just questioning the spelling mistake on Black Sands just for confirmation. I'm not seeing.
No problem. I've got Dean Somerfelt from Black Sands, and then I've got Randy Jensen from Bulk Sands.
Oh, up here.
Oh, up top. Oh, as present, under others' presence.
It's minor.
Oh, on the people.
Sorry, I was looking at the delegation.
All right, so with this amendment, could we have the minutes adopted as amended? All in favor? Thank you. All right, so we need to go through the many requests for decisions that we have there. The first item is a parade scheduled for 2014. It has been traditional for council to represent our town in other towns and be part of that parade, and they are quite often part of our parade also. The question we have maybe and should look at is the overall burden of cost that we have regarding those parades. In Raymond, we normally send a counselor and a spouse. Same story in McGrath, same story in Pinchot Creek, same story in Fort McLeod. It has been traditional in Cardston to have all of council there and to afterwards have a mayor's luncheon. So that is something we want to maybe decide if we want to carry on with this tradition or not. But there is one item which is fairly costly. It's a Lethbridge one. The reason I say it's costly is because not only we have the carriage cost, but because afterwards it has been in the past a tradition for all members of council to go and eat together somewhere. So now we're talking about many per diem that have to be added to the cost of the parade. So it's no longer just $500 for the carriage. And maybe the candies, we don't throw them at that point. But it's all a per diem. So I want to know from this council, do you want us to participate in a Lethbridge parade with one carriage, counselor, and a member of council, and a spouse? Or do you want to see as tradition, the whole council go there? So maybe let's do a tour at the table. Councilor Edmonds, what's your feeling on that one?
Well, I think one counselor is fine.
Okay. Councilor Creed?
Well, we need to be represented. I would suggest that it be the mayor or deputy mayor in that parade.
Okay, so one?
Yeah, that would be okay.
With a spouse. Okay. Councilor Barnes?
I'm fine. Whatever you guys want to do, I mean.
No, but what's your decision? I need to have your point of view.
Yeah, well, what do they do with our parade?
They don't come.
They don't come to our parade. So it's really not a big issue if we don't show up with a full contingent to their parade. And it's during the day too when other people are working, right?
Yeah.
So I would say at least a mayor and maybe one counselor along, you know, two people. That's kind of what I feel. If we've been doing seven before.
Okay. Councilor Pivoy?
Yeah, just a quick question. In the past, it sounds like we sent one carriage from Carriage House?
We sent the whole trolley.
The trolley from?
Oh, the trolley.
And then they carry everybody in.
I was wondering how that worked.
Yeah.
I agree with Dennis. I think one, you know, one is fine. Two is good. I don't think all seven.
Not only one, we sent one, we sent a spouse with that one.
Sure.
A little bit more balanced. Councilor Bantry?
I'm not opposed to any amount of councilors that want to go. I think it's good representation for our community. The people in Lethbridge see us out there, and they support us out there. Maybe we don't need to take the trolley. Maybe we need to just take a big style buggy like we have in the past.
There's room for two couples in one of those bigger buggies anyway.
Well, there's, well, there's, we used to have a wagon when Greg was our CAO, and we put everybody in there that was there. And consequently, not all of the councilors go. So I'm not opposed to having as many there as want to go.
Okay.
And simply because they ask for our representation, and they do send a counselor or a mayor to our parade. In the past, we've had.
Have they had? Last year, we didn't see that.
If I might, it's usually Ryan Parker that's attended.
So I had one counselor attend? Okay, so I stand to be corrected on that one.
Well, we've had, we even had.
Okay.
What's the name of the mayor?
It seems to me that around the table, the desire would be to participate in that parade, for sure. The only point is one counselor and a spouse, or more than that. So somebody could make a motion that would be helpful. Councilor Bantry, Barnes?
I make a motion that we send two council members, including one of them being either the mayor or deputy mayor and a counselor in our town. That's my total.
Okay, so you would want to see two from this town? Okay, with the spouse?
Yeah.
Okay. So, any questions?
I might add to that, that if there's a counselor, like I know Barfers is often in town, and if he just wants to jump on the trolley for the duration of the parade.
There won't be the trolley there. If we take two, it would be a carriage.
Yeah, there may not be room for people on it.
I'm just thinking that if anybody else wants to tag along and not charge a per diem, I don't see a problem with that. If the trolley's there, I was assuming the trolley was there, so. But if the trolley's not there, then there's not room. So no point in having.
Okay. Well, we're going to go through the different thing. Anyway, we have a motion there. So all in favor of having two councilors rather than the whole group? Councilor Pivoy?
Well, I'm just curious. The motion that we're making, is this to override a previous motion where all seven went, or is this?
Never did have a motion.
Do we really need a motion?
It would be to establish the future of this parade financially.
Right.
Yeah, it's a cost-effective measure.
It's a cost-effective measure.
Yeah, well, I'm all for that.
Okay.
Yeah, cut out five people, five per diem.
And I really think that there is no reason why we cannot have a little bit of a rotation through the four-year term that we have. There's no reason for mayor to always be there. You can have someone else.
This is the first I knew you got a per diem for right. I didn't recognize that.
Yeah, I have to go back.
Sometimes you get.
Yeah, good grief. There we go.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. All in favor of sending two councilors and spouses? Okay, so we.
Yes, I have a contrary view because I didn't see you.
Okay, so all against? We're stuck, so that's not very good because that means that we have to keep it as we are at this point.
The motion fails. The motion fails.
I didn't see how many go there again.
Three.
All right, so at the parade, we will decide who goes. And we will decide for that Lethbridge parade, who goes, and if we need the trolley or if we need a carriage. Okay? At that point, we will decide. Okay, so Raymond Parade, who would like to go to that one?
I think Council Barfers is from Raymond, isn't he? I don't know. He's a pastor and a pastor. But he did live in Raymond for a while. Did he? Yeah.
Okay, but Council Barfers is not there to speak to it. So is anyone interested in Raymond Parade?
We could, we could.
Schedule it.
We could bring this up later when he's here, when we're all here, so that we can.
Can somebody tell me which parade interests them? Councilor Barnes, you did Fort McLeod, the winter parade. Is there somebody here at the table who would like to do the winter parade?
I'll do it.
Good. Councilor Edmonds, thank you. Okay.
They have a very nice luncheon after and stuff. They're really good.
The Pinchot Creek Parade I've done in the past, but if somebody else wants to do it, fair game.
August 16th, yeah, that's my wife's birthday.
Okay.
Maybe she would like another carriage ride. I could go.
Would you like to go, Councilor Barnes?
I bet she'd like to go.
Okay.
She likes those carriage rides.
The Cardston one, we pretty well traditionally asked that all councilors be there. McGrath?
I'll do McGrath.
Okay. Councilor Bantry? And Raymond?
I'd be happy to do it.
Okay, all right, so that would be Counselor Pivoy, which would give a chance to Counselor Barfers to go to the Lethbridge one if it's so wished.
Now, do we just have one go to the Raymond McGrath parade?
Yes.
It would be very helpful to know how many really are planning to attend the Lethbridge parade because when we book the carriages.
You have to know which one.
They'll need to book a specific carriage.
That's right.
And the Lethbridge parade, they use a number of Raymondton carriages for different organizations. So if we could make that decision tonight, it would be helpful.
Okay, that's a very good point, Marion. I forgot about this little detail, but it was in our background that you write. Okay, so.
At that time, I will be the deputy mayor, so I wouldn't mind going.
Okay. 19th is on a Tuesday. Yeah, I can get away.
So Counselor Barnes, what goes there?
Richard? Oh, I'm in Lethbridge every day. I was planning one.
Okay.
Do you want me there? Do you want the mayor to be there with you?
Well, that's, we said that as many want to go, can go to that one.
Well, if you want me to be there, I can ride on the buggy. I don't think my wife will be there.
Okay, so at this point, we would have Counselor Barnes and Counselor Bantry.
And you, the mayor?
Well, then we have to pick a trolley. It's a different story.
No, we don't go back in that takes six couples, don't we?
Do we have a larger wagon?
Yeah, because they took one of the former parade.
One of the stagecoaches potentially.
And I think it'd be less money.
Okay, all right, so I would, I will come with you.
So with three couples?
Well, okay, yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, so this is done. Thank you.
See, my wife will think that that parade's for blood.
A big happy birthday, Diane.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
The Seawar Spring Information Session isn't championed. That would be for Council Barfers. He is not here today to tell us if he would go to that session. Maybe if it's okay.
I can put my name or someone else as a backup if he's not available.
Okay, all right, so Councilor Pivoy, the reason we would like to have somebody going there is especially because they will be presenting the project development, and that's something that we as a town are interested in.
Well, and I need to personally learn more about Seawar anyway, so.
Okay, well, if you'd like.
I'm particularly interested.
If you'd like to go, thank you. Policy V 35, Barnes?
I've gone in the past. I'm sorry. I already didn't need you.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Mary was looking at me.
Yeah, my question is, because of the discussion here, is Counselor Pivoy the representative or are you the backup to Counselor Barfers?
He's a backup to Counselor Barfers, is what he said.
So we will ask Counselor Barfers. If he's not available, we'll register.
Yeah. And if you can, Counselor Creed, I also show some interest.
Well, I have attended in the past, and you know, if we can get more people learning about it, that's fine. I'm not, it doesn't matter. But I'd be willing to go if you needed me, so.
Okay, thank you. Policy V 35, Volunteer Main Street Patrol Protocol. As you can see, administration has drafted a protocol after having met with Corporal Aket and with our fire chief and with our police officer. And they kind of looked at it and reviewed it and felt it was good enough to protect our volunteers when they are on the street doing the patrolling. There are parameters that are laid out in order to create a fair representation of volunteers throughout town without being cumbersome and too much for our business people. Counselor Bantry?
Will this also include the COP program?
I would believe that.
As they patrol Main Street also?
I would believe that because you're part of the volunteers, it probably go under the volunteers?
I think we've got to be careful with that.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, Marion? My understanding is that the COP will operate under the COP and that they're not part of this program. If you choose to have your volunteers patrol Main Street on foot.
We've been asked that.
And we would ask that they abide by this policy for their protection.
On foot, on foot, not head out.
We have a no-hands already clause in our COP. But my concern is, is you're organizing a volunteer Main Street program, a protocol. What about all the other volunteers that volunteer in our community? Do we need to have a protocol for that also? Because we have safety issues with volunteers.
You know what? If I understand.
Something about Palau.
Yeah, if I understand properly, those volunteers are covered by the town policy?
Correct.
And insurance, insurance policy? Because I already asked for that, and for the parade is the same story.
Can I ask administration how they're covered?
Okay, yeah, please.
Yeah, we have an insurance policy under the town that our volunteers are covered. So we report how many estimated hours we have in a year for volunteers, and we do have an insurance policy in place. The difference here is the concern with the nature of the volunteer work and the potential for endangerment of those volunteers. And so in our discussions with the RCMP and the other people around the table, we want to ensure, first of all, that we knew who was out doing the volunteer work. In other organizations, it's a coordinated effort so we know that those volunteers are in place for us. So that was the intent of the registration at the RCMP. The RCMP also wanted to be aware that these individuals were on patrol in case there was an incident, and they would be aware that they may have to respond. And the other side of it, it was making sure that the volunteers were acting appropriately. And similar to your COP program, we wanted to ensure that they didn't engage in any kind of enforcement because, of course, that puts them again into a more risk than we felt comfortable with as volunteers.
I still, I still have some questions on this, on this policy. That if you have an individual that's volunteering out there, and he doesn't register with the RCMP or he doesn't register with the town, and he is hurt as a volunteer, is he going to be covered? And so this, this policy is pretty stringent if you think about it because we have to protect ourselves also. And if, if I just go out there as a citizen and decide to walk up and down the streets and I get hurt doing it, and I haven't signed in or anything like that, I'm just doing it for the community good, am I covered? And this policy says no.
That is the intent of the policy, counselor, is that they would not be covered if they're not registered because there has to be some kind of control on our behalf to cover. We can't cover every citizen in Cardston.
Exactly.
Because they're doing good. So if an individual wants to be involved in this program, then we ask that they register so that we're aware that they're out doing this.
So in our Palau, when we have the volunteers doing the parking and stuff like that, and one of them gets run over, are they going to be covered?
Covered by the town, yes.
So they're going to be registered?
They are in a different way.
They're not registered under this program. This program is different. I just want to be clear. We don't ask that all volunteers register, but volunteers in, for instance, the Palau, we know who those volunteers are. They're registered with the organization that's hosting the event.
Counselor Bantry, if you could look at it from this point of view, the protocol is called Volunteer Main Street Patrol Protocol.
Right.
So it's limited to that. Does that clarify maybe?
Well, it does, and yet I still got some questions. So I'll meet with Marion and further my question.
Meanwhile, we need a resolution to approve that. In other words, we need a motion to approve this protocol.
I'll make that motion to approve it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Creed?
I just have a question because I, you know, not being involved in the discussions, I was curious at what the, with Chief Melvin, he was representing the volunteers at that discussion, is that right?
He was in some way talking as a fire chief and as a potential person that had volunteers that were willing to do that.
Yeah, I was just curious what, you know, if somebody that was there, kind of what was his feeling and reaction, you know, to this protocol? Was it very amenable to this?
Okay, so maybe what you're asking me is that him imposing that on his people or that his people coming to him, that it's his people came to him and asked him they could do that?
Yeah, and are they comfortable, are they as volunteers? What, you know, was this kind of run by them or did he accept this in behalf of?
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Marion can maybe talk to that.
Yeah, he will be addressing us at the next fire meeting, their training evening. He had a good understanding of what their intent was. But again, we were looking at this from, he wants to make sure his employees and his volunteers are protected. We do as well. And so there's nothing really in here, I don't believe, that the volunteers themselves would have problems with because really it's for their protection. And we want to make sure that there is some protocol in place because there's, if, for instance, one of the things is recording of personal information. There was a situation where we had phone calls from business owners that were concerned about these volunteers coming into businesses and recording personal information. So we want to make sure that those kind of things don't happen and that they're there as eyes and ears and that the intent is very clear, that they're there as eyes and ears, right?
Yeah. No, I have no problem with that. I just kind of wanted to, you know, I could get a feeling for what their position was as volunteers.
Danny was in the, was in the room for this discussion as well as Lloyd and Corporal Aket, and they all provided input into the draft of the protocol.
Any other questions? Counselor Pivoy?
I heard, and I don't know if you've all heard this, I heard there was a volunteer, I think it was one of our firemen walking up, witnessed a crime, in this case, a drug transaction, drug deal, watched it. And when he finally was able to get the RCMP to show up, of course, the perpetrators were gone, and they said, well, we can't do anything unless we witness it. So I'm just wondering if, you know, being the eyes and ears, if they can take their smartphone cameras and video record, and then if that would be evidence enough to, you know, they cannot do that.
I believe they can. I would be very cautious with that. Now, if, if the response to that volunteer was that the RCMP had to witness, I don't believe that's correct. According to Corporal Aket, and we put it in the policy, we would ask that they be willing to swear a statement and potentially go to court if required. And that's all it would take. So I think maybe there was some miscommunication there.
There may be, but I just want to make sure that, you know, if one of our people out there witnesses a crime and their testimony isn't enough to convict.
No.
Then what's the point?
According to Corporal Aket, that is what it would take.
See, and I heard the opposite.
Yeah.
I heard that he did report and did call and did explain and that the RCMP got the perpetrator and took him away. That's what I was told.
Okay, well, it might be a different transaction.
I, I heard that, that he did report and did call and did explain and that the RCMP got the perpetrator and took him away. That's what I was told.
Okay, well, it might be a different transaction.
Okay.
Mayor, I've only got one question. Are we going to get the activity that we need or the results we need by forming the 911 system? Because that is a really a slow, slow system. And I don't wonder if we shouldn't use that direct line right into the RCMP?
No, the RCMP has asked that we use the 911 and that they only use their radios and direct contact with the RCMP if.
If they have the radio with them.
If they need immediate response. That is at their request. If one of the things, sorry, if I might just continue, one of the things with the 911 system is it records and files them, right?
Oh, yeah.
So there's, there's an obligation on behalf of the local detachment to follow through on that file once the call's gone through 911 as well.
Marion, my question would be, what does that, what does that mean by immediate response? Have they defined that?
That's right.
Does that mean being hurt? What exactly, how do you define that?
If there's endangerment of any kind.
Endangerment. So that would be the, the kind of now.
If there's, if there's the potential for personal injury or injury to others, that would be.
Right.
But we didn't want to be too definitive in that.
But not like a vehicle break-in. That's not urgent in any way.
Just if you want to cash and buy that.
Well.
No, that's.
If it's in progress.
If it's in progress, then of course they can.
Oh, if it's in progress, they can use the radio?
If they.
Same with a drug deal in progress?
I think we're getting into details.
Well, and I apologize, but I'm just trying to understand the scope of this program here, you know, like, I, I think ultimately the drug deals is going to be the primary focus here.
Okay, here's, here's the rationale for this. The volunteer that would have access to a radio that gives them direct contact to the RCMP have those radios for a specific purpose, okay? We wanted to be cautious that that radio communication was not overused, okay? And so in our discussions, there is times when calling 911 is appropriate and there's times when direct contact is appropriate. There's going to have to be some discretion there, right? If, if they happen to have access to a radio, they see a drug deal going down and they call, that will be up to Corporal Ake with her staff to determine if that's an appropriate call and they will deal with that. We just tried to put it in the, in the policy where it was, we don't want it abused, if I might.
Sure.
Okay?
That's great.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table?
Not yet, but I have two more questions.
Please.
The second question is, as eyes and ears, and again, I don't know who was in the meeting, but are they, is, is part of their scope to ask the vagrants to move along or are they just merely to observe, never to move along?
The idea will be that their sheer presence would kind of create movement.
So they don't have the authority to say, hey, you guys, maybe we need to move this along?
We've asked them not to engage because by engaging, they create risk, okay?
Okay. And then that would be where Lloyd would take in. I mean, Lloyd has that privilege, that authority.
Correct. And we also have our liaison or person starting about, well, starting on the 14th of April, so he will be there constantly as well, so.
Is that party?
Yeah.
What the intent is with this volunteer is the illegal activity that's happening because with the, with the idea of enforcement, the, the illegal activity will dissipate, right? So.
So my last question on this one was the, it says, you know, we're not taking personal information. I, I kind of, I guess I didn't understand what that was referring to. If, if a crime is witnessed, does this person write down the names of the witnesses or is that personal information that this person does not write down?
That, that would be considered personal information and that would be the role of the RCMP. They can be prepared to swear a statement and just say, you know, they can ask the person their name if they want to be a witness to the crime, but.
Who's they? This person, this officer, the patrol officer? You just said they could ask if the person wanted to be a witness.
If I witnessed, if I am the volunteer and I just witnessed a crime and there's some people around me, I may say to them, did you see that? Would you be willing to be a witness? In that case, then yes, they could ask for them to wait around for the RCMP or take their contact information to provide to the RCMP.
So they could get that personal information? That's the, that was the question. I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding what other personal information is the problem.
Under FOIP, it's very, very, you know, you've got to be very careful.
Okay, I'll give you, I'll give you an example that brought this to light. Already we had an individual who went into a business and was writing down names of people, of customers in that business. The business owner phoned us and said, I don't want this happening in my business. So that's what we're trying to address here. We don't want that type of information being trapped by these volunteers.
Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, just a question about the, the summer guy.
Walked in.
Pardon me?
Walked in.
Yeah. Has there been any tracking of the effectiveness of his work in the summertime?
I just speak to that.
And, and the reason I ask the question is, I just happened to be in one of the businesses and they, they said that they didn't think it was very effective use of money at all, but.
The Chamber of Commerce is getting positive reports to the point where the chamber collectively is on the margin side.
Awesome. That's good.
They see value there.
And the RCMP saw great value in it.
Good. That's, that's great.
Mayor, to sort of support Dennis's comments there, Counselor Barnes's comments, I watched our, our peace officer, our town peace officer, talked to some people on Main Street and it was very ineffective and he's in uniform. I mean, they just basically moved about five steps and went on their business and he literally walked away and he's in uniform. So I'm wondering how effective this volunteer program is going to be, you know?
Okay, the, the problem here, Counselor Ben-Gree, since we don't have Lloyd Stewart here to address what you witnessed, it's difficult to really, you know, what the discussion was all about, right?
That is just one incident, Mayor. But I, I'm, I'm concerned if there's no engagement, there's no uniforms that are being worn, I mean, how effective is this policy working with volunteers going to be? I don't, I don't think it's going to be very effective at all.
You know, maybe what we have to do at this point is vote on that protocol and see how it unfolds. If the results are not. And not positive, then we will have to revisit. But at this time, it is definitely better than what we offer. And I am willing to give it a try for that reason.
That's why I put the motion there, that I'm willing to try, but I just don't agree on the effectiveness.
All in favor? Thank you.
Did you move that one?
Okay. Thank you for your conversation. They are really, it's always good to have good conversation regarding issues.
It's good to be thorough.
That can make our town better. I appreciate that very much. Okay, so Councilon Agricultural Society, if you read your background, you would see that what the society is asking of us is to approve $3,000 under the program that is called the Councilon Opportunities Initiative Policy. Counselor Pivoy, since you sit on that committee, would you like to debrief and speak to it, please?
Sure, you bet, yeah. The Ag Society became aware of a, a potential grant through the agricultural initiatives, the provincial ag initiatives that required some matched funding, et cetera, but they could obtain that funding through other grants. They learned about the Town Opportunities Initiative and they, we checked with Jeff, we found out there was $3,000 available in that fund. So again, we're not approving an additional amount, we're just saying, hey, yeah, of the amount we have in that fund, 3,000 can go to this organization, the Ag Society, for what we hope to be a very substantial activity, an annual activity that will go forward starting this year forevermore.
So that's a South County Horse Expo?
That's right. So I, I, let's see, yeah, South Country, yeah. I was like, South County, I don't know.
Oh, South County.
Yeah, either way. I, I just know we named it after the hotel, so I'm just kidding. Yes, the South Country Horse Expo is, is supposed to be, it's going to be a big thing. There's going to be horse vaulting demos, so very entertaining with a little bit of a rodeo element. And then the main attraction, believe it or not, is actually education. They're having some high-profile veterinarians come and teach, you know, how to take care of your horse, that kind of thing. So people will come just to hear that, but to be entertained as well, I mean, you can't beat that. And so it'll be a big deal. It'll be a big deal and it helps us kind of beef up our equestrian activities here in, in Cardston. So it puts us back on the map.
It looks like it's showing a profit too.
Thanks.
Potentially, the budget.
It's showing a budgeted profit.
Okay, so there is a budgeted profit that is given in our background. Thank you, Counselor Barnes, for pointing that. It's about $7,000 if I remember right. And the idea of this seed funding, that this year they would get $3,000, next year they would get 80% of that, 2,400. The following year, 60% of the original, which is 1,800. The following year, 40% of the original, which would be 1,200. And at that point, we hope for this event to carry on, but it be self-sustaining through their own funding and through a little bit of the reserves they might have put aside. Hopefully what you have defined as a profit would be true and you can run with that. Is that what it is?
Well, honestly, based on the discussions we've had, if they can, if it can be as big as they're hoping, they don't plan to come back to us next year. They hope to be self-sufficient that quickly. But, you know, if they need a little help year two, year three, they fully understand the model, which is the Waterton Glacier Relay and the fact that they were weaned off of the grant funding earlier than this five-year projection. So they're, they're shooting for an early meaning of the grant.
So what I need, I need a motion to approve the $3,000 for the South Country Horse Expo to come out of the Councilon Opportunity Initiative funding or policy.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Counselor Pivoy makes that motion. Any other questions? Counselor Ben-Gree?
With the use of that $3,000, have we got other funding in place for other initiatives?
That will leave us about $1,200, somewhere in that area.
That'll leave us about $1,200?
We have, we would have potentially this one was, have $800 for the relay this year. They didn't use most of theirs last year. I don't envision they'll use most of it again this year, but it's there hypothetically.
And there's nothing else?
And that's all we, we have at this time.
I've got a quick question.
Counselor Barnes?
Do they still doing the slide-in? Is that gone by the wayside?
They haven't done it for a number of years.
Haven't they?
That's too bad.
Yeah, that's too bad.
All right, question?
One question. I, we're just wondering, do we have, is there a, like a, a policy or qualifications or some criteria for this initiative? I just, I'm just not sure that I've seen one and I just.
It should be in your package, I think.
You need to bring a business plan, you need to describe the event, the business plan and, yeah, show a little bit how you intend to sustain yourself after.
You just simply go down and.
Just scroll down.
On the same, on the same.
Yeah, just scroll down. Scroll down, Counselor Creed, and you come to a policy.
That's our policy.
They had a tablet.
There is also, there's also an application, right?
Is there qualification?
Okay.
Well, they.
They sent a thorough application.
Okay, okay, I, I found it, yeah.
You got it?
Opportunity Initiative Policy.
Okay, no, sorry.
Sorry.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. We ready to vote? No more questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, and we wish you well with that initiative, looking forward to it. Okay, 7E, Alberta Culture Days. Here is an opportunity for the town to apply for a grant, but it's time-specific. And I'm not sure that we have defined an opportunity as of yet. Marion?
Just in addition, I don't think I put in the background, one of the strategic priorities of council was to create a culture week.
Right.
And so I, I thought this was a good fit with one of your strategic priorities.
And what I was saying to Marion, I've seen in other towns in Surrey, B.C., for example, a whole week where they feature a different ethnic group or opportunities for people to showcase a country with food, with, with entertainment, with music, dance, whatever. So I think there are tremendous amount of opportunities if we could get a group together in a community that could spearhead such a thing.
I would suggest we table, table this, this cultural opportunity and for further discussion closer to 2015 so that we can carry on our plan.
Right now, it's specific for this year.
Yeah, but are we on time? Are we, have we got a timeframe to do it?
Well, that's the whole question, Counselor Creed.
Yeah, as I read this, I guess what came to my mind was that perhaps one of our community theater groups might be a logical group to.
Perform.
To head, you know, to, to, to maybe head this up or to take the lead maybe with other groups, but they have.
Dance group, et cetera.
Yeah, they have, they have lots of talents and, and for this type of thing, it's a performance.
Choirs.
Yeah, so I'm, that was, that was my thought, that maybe they'd be approached and see if one of the.
Deadline is April 28th, so if they have to form a committee, they're going to be pushed.
Okay, so Counselor Pivoy?
Yeah, just have a quick question for administration. Jeff, if, if we can get somebody willing to do this, are you, are you in a position to help them write this grant?
Sure.
Yeah?
As somebody, we can, we could probably help. I haven't looked at the grant application specifically.
So I think the big obstacle would be that.
We, we would have someone in the organization help write the grant.
Okay.
Okay, so what exactly, Marion, do we need at this point? Is it an ad hoc committee to kind of look at the opportunity and see if we can spearhead something?
What, what I would like to see is if council supports this initiative, to give direction to administration to pursue with, I think the, the theater group is a great group to discuss with. But it would be nice to have a council member who would be willing to work with that group so there's a bit of a tie between the two.
I'd be, I'd be happy, or maybe.
Would you like to both sit on it?
Yeah, I'd be here.
Put our name, the two bills are on it, so we'll make this happen.
Be double billing, yeah?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
What's your motion?
All right, so it's, no, we don't need a motion, we just need to give administration direction to proceed with looking into the formation of an ad hoc committee.
Help me understand how much the grant is for. I'm seeing wages here.
Yeah, if you earn this one, you get up to 20, if you earn this one, you're up.
It can be fairly substantial, depending on what we intend to do.
If we went with a whole week, we could.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Marion?
It might be preferable to have a motion.
Do you want a motion?
Simply because we may have to show to, in the grant application, the support of council.
Okay, all right.
I prepared, make that motion that Counselor Creed and Counselor Pivoy sit on an ad hoc committee and start the process for accessing the communities.
Alberta Culture Days.
Alberta Culture Days. Grant, yes.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for the motion, welcome. All in favor? Thank you, carried. All right, the next item, 7F, is Citizen Satisfaction Survey. Marion, maybe if you want to talk, to talk regarding, please come on and have a seat. Thank you. Just have a delegation coming, so we're glad to see them come. Thank you. We're just going to entertain one item and then we'll give you the floor, okay? Do you want to talk about that Citizen Satisfaction Survey that you have in your package and explain to council a little bit the rationale behind it, which is to gather information and be able to measure the satisfaction of, of citizens regarding their progress on our strategic planning?
Correct. So the intent here is that we would put out an annual Citizen Satisfaction Survey. The intent would be that we use the same survey year after year so that we have proper data, we're comparing apples to apples, right? It, it gives us then a bit of a benchmark as of 2014 that we'll be able to judge the satisfaction in the community, for lack of better words, to our progress with our strategic plan. And so this is here for your. And so this is here for your approval prior to sending it out to the public. We would do it, try and distribute this in a number of ways via being able to submit the survey online or, you know, we would distribute it in print form as well and try and get this to be something that the community continues to participate year after year and feels that there's some, some, I guess, support in their suggestions from council. So we would report to the citizens the results of the survey on an annual basis as well in our annual report and hopefully over time we will see some improvement in that satisfaction.
Okay, I just want to do a little bit of a tour of the table before we, we approve this survey the way it is. Have we all had the chance to really have a good look at it? Councillor, I know you just came back and you probably did not have too much of a chance to...
Well, I, I did read it while I was down there. I had, you know, about on the cloud, I had my computer with me.
Okay, do you feel comfortable with it at this point of view?
Well, I, I had some questions. It was very similar to the survey that we send out, at least similar to the one that was sent out last, just before the election. I mean, it has some very, some very similar items on that.
I would say, yes, there is. For our municipal development plan, the survey obviously was a little more comprehensive.
Right.
This is just looking for kind of, you know, from very satisfied to not at all satisfied with some general comments at the end, right? Obviously in municipal government, when you send out surveys, there's going to be a lot of similarities because of the nature of our business, right?
A question ahead for Marion is regarding that survey is probably when you look here, the third bullet down, okay? Here it talks about the town provides good program and services to its citizens and I thought, wow, why are the programs? So you turn the page, the programs are there. So I really wondered if it was not a redundant kind of question, better answered by the different program specifics, rather than a very broad brush that you might not know how to answer really.
I, I think it just asks generally how do they feel?
Yeah.
Because someone might say, I think the town stinks, and then answer excellent on every individual program and then you would might say, what's your problem? What more do you want us to do?
Well, it's a little bit what we saw in the reviews that we had. This is why I wondered if it's not best to eliminate that and allow them to answer specifically that, so we have a better sense of what it is that like or not. So we don't have the false cue coming from that, the answer to that question. Essentially, that was one question that I had in mind.
Well, are we, and just out of curiosity, are we asking us to kind of scrutinize the document and maybe recommend amendments, or are we just saying, hey, in principle, we say go to administration, make this happen? Like, are we, are we more policy or are we setting up this survey?
Okay, there's two questions there. Go ahead, Marion.
I would say, yes, you are more policy. But if there is a glaring absence of something you would like to know of how the citizens are reacting to you as council and your decisions, then we should include that.
Okay, so do you want to approve it in principle, as you said, and then have again a, a good look and inform administration, or do you want it to be a set?
You want to...
I would prefer to have a motion tonight, whether you want to move forward with this, because we're already into March.
Yes.
We're, we're getting into...
Dennis? Okay. One of the biggest concerns that I have with these surveys is communicating to the public that we have a survey and we really want them to respond. How have past surveys been responded to? Like, how do we get them out to the people? Do you put them in with a tax notice? You put them on the website? We put them on, on the social media, on Facebook, on the Cardston site? You know, I would suggest those are, all those areas that should be used and, and in the Temple City Star. If we're going to get a real good representation on the survey, we need to get it out there as many, to as many people as possible because satisfaction surveys, there are a number of people that really like to do these things, but other people are going to answer. I like to do surveys myself, because especially when they're community-minded ones.
I think we also have a role to let our people know around that.
We need to let them know, that's right. So we need to get it out there as much, that's the only real concern. I looked over the survey and I, I like the questions. Generally, I'm, I'm happy with that. I don't have a problem with what you're saying there at all. I'm okay with that. Sometimes redundant questions are just, just out there anyways, but, but, but I, I like it. I think it's really good. I think it does hit on the important things that we need to know about the services that we are providing to our citizens.
Thank you. Councillor Edmonds?
My only concern is the delivery model. When we did that last survey, was when we were out doing canvassing and envelopes were left on bushes, on doorsteps, front lawns. They weren't actually tucked in the door, like a lot of the houses had screen doors that would open, but yet the, the thing was just left out on the porch and they were getting wet and, you know, I think a lot of people didn't respond. We'd put a stamp on every envelope, so I think we need a better way of getting it to the people.
In that case, we were trying to go door to door because it was the municipal development plan. I, I don't think in this case on an annual basis, we want to go door to door. I think we could do a mail drop for town residents and we can use all of the VIT that we have available to us and, and like maybe the Temple City Star, just as a notice to stop and pick one up if you haven't received it. I think if we want to put the, the survey in there, we might, maybe we could do an insert into the star as something that...
Yeah, that would work.
Can that be an insert? I don't think we want to go door to door with this on an annual basis.
Could we have used, I mean, used the Cobra Red program?
No.
I'm sorry. None of the birds can see, you feel it?
No.
Councillor Bankford?
This survey is actually five pages long, Marion?
Can be reduced, is how big print can be.
Yeah, is there any way we can reduce that? Because a lot of people, they start looking at surveys and, oh man, five pages, forget this.
I think what's, what's doable with this though, is it really is a checkmark, checkmark, checkmark. It's not, oh, I have to answer a question.
Regardless, it's five pages and people are going to look back.
I mean, is, that is probably a large print, but a administration can work into it.
Is there anything that's missing that you'd like to see asked in the survey?
Councillor Creed?
One thing I've noticed, I mean, being on council, I'm familiar with all of these programs and, and things like that, but, you know, as, as a citizen who, who is not involved, some of these, well, for instance, I'm on FCSS, there may be, you know, you've, you've got rating, you know, as, as good, average, maybe there should be a column saying, do you know anything about, are you aware of this program or something?
No.
Because...
Just a bullet that says, I don't know what that is.
There may be, you know, a lot of people that will see, you know, a program in there and they won't even know how to respond because they are not aware that the program is in existence.
Could be as applicable or not applicable.
Something like that. Stop using acronyms too. FCSS.
Okay, I'm looking at the time. We have two minutes left before we have a public hearing. It's going to maybe delay the delegation presentation by a few minutes. Is that all right? Thank you so much. So we will, we still need to know, we need to approve this survey. Councillor Barnes?
I'll make the motion to approve this survey and...
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right, so I really think we have one more minute. Marion, do you want to just...
Sure.
Get started? Thank you.
I think we can go.
This is a public hearing, we need to adjourn to a public hearing. Somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll move to adjourn to the public hearing.
Thank you councillor Pivoy. Marion, can you read us bylaw 1623A regarding garbage rate, please? And maybe give us a little bit of background, why it's back on the table.
All right, the public hearing is for bylaw 1623A, whereas the town of Cardston gave third reading to bylaw 1623, a bylaw of the town of Cardston in the province of Alberta, to provide for orderly collection, removal and disposal of garbage and for recycling, the garbage bylaw of the town of Cardston on September 10th of 2013. Now therefore, the municipal council of the town of Cardston duly assented, hereby amends the garbage bylaw of the town of Cardston as follows. Appendix A, setting out the rates for garbage collection in the town of Cardston shall be replaced with appendix A attached here too. The background to this is in September, when the current bylaw was passed, third reading, a previous appendix was attached which outlined the rates from 2011 instead of the rates that were approved in 2000 and, you know, it outlined the 2010 rates instead of the 2011 rates that were approved. That was noticed in February of this year, so we've done an evaluation of that. We will be refunding all of the payments if this bylaw receives third reading, which would be to effective, to be effective April 1st, 2014. It meant an overpayment of, I believe, $1.53 per month per residence, so we will be making that amendment to those, those utilities if this bylaw...
How many months was that again for?
January, February, March.
So the three months.
Yeah.
So it's an average of around, what, five bucks?
Five bucks, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. So first reading was approved already. What I need is a motion for second reading.
Do that until after the public hearing, right?
Yeah, come out of the public hearing.
So we just need to ask if anybody in the gallery would like to talk regarding this, this bylaw. No. Since now, we can entertain, first of all, to go back into the regular meeting. Is that your motion, councillor Bankford? Thank you. So all, all in favor? Okay, we just need to...
We'll, we'll vote.
Okay, so I need a motion for second reading.
Hold on, second reading of bylaw 1623A.
Thank you councillor Edmonds. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. And now I need a motion for third reading.
I'll, I'll move third reading of bylaw 1623A, going to the final.
Any questions? Six, nine. All in favor? Thank you. Put this one to rest. Make sure it's a right appendix.
I apologize.
No carry comments, no dashes.
All right. Okay, we're very glad to have our delegation, so I don't know, Alana, are you the one representing?
Sure, I guess I am.
Okay, go ahead.
What, just right here?
You can come to the front. Alana is there representing the Cardston...
Number four, right?
The Cardston Charities Theater Foundation, charity house foundation. Thank you.
I have with me our president of the Charity House Theater Foundation, Debbie Fletcher. Doreen Card is here as our treasurer. And then we have Darren Atwood, who is a new board member of the Charity House Theater Foundation. I did talk to Marion today and we also received some correspondence from you, yourself, mayor, and you've also talked to Doreen. I think this is all, I think everybody understands this, but what we would like to do is just that, you know, we have made application in. I will tell you that our application was late. That was my fault. After summer, I actually took a few months off and had some surgery and took care of a few things and three years ago and I put in my BlackBerry, I laid my BlackBerry to rest and I have an iPhone now, so it did carry with me. So we will try a little bit to make that application in a timely fashion.
Okay, so the application that you are making, you want to talk about it?
Sure, it's for tax exemption and as you see in the municipal act, if we are nonprofit and we do that right for, to put an application in. I have given Marion the documents to show that we are nonprofit, just to let you know if we were not nonprofit, if we were not a nonprofit organization, we would not be able to access the grants that we presently access. When we apply for our yearly grants through the Alberta Foundation of the Arts, we have to prove that we're nonprofit and we also have been able to access several CIP, Community Initiatives, grants because we're nonprofit and in May of 2007, we actually received charitable status from the government of Canada. So that's actually one step beyond being a nonprofit.
Okay, do you, do you want to explain to us a little bit, as a charitable organization, what you have to do every year in order to maintain that status?
Well, maybe I can have Doreen, just because that's kind of where she's in order for...
Go ahead, because those are important factors for us.
Can I just stand here?
Sure, please.
Well, actually, we'll move you over here for the microphone, actually.
Oh, that's true.
We've got channel 32 recording.
Okay, so to maintain our charitable status, each year we have to file a charity return along with financial statements and they go to the federal government and we have to show that our expenses and our income are used to run the programs that we have said that we facilitate. So our programs are the promotion of culture and, and we do that through theater and we do that, the movies and stuff that we have always listed as being, we have fundraising for, for our charity, for our organization, for programs that we run.
Okay, so when you're done with this process, the government in return gives you a certification, a notification, tell me what you receive back from the government.
We don't really receive anything back, other than just an acknowledgement that we have filed our annual charity return. We don't have any other kind of certificate that comes, we just maintain our status as a charity body fulfilling those obligations for filing those returns.
Okay, so you maintain your status by fulfilling...
By filing a yearly return.
Okay, and so how do you know that you have maintained it? Because your charitable number still stands.
Our charitable number still stands. If we would have been, I guess, erased from that or reviewed from that, we would be, we would receive notification of that review key that we had, not fulfilled our obligations.
So every year you receive a paper telling you that you have filed the required papers?
We don't get a paper, we don't really get a paper back, they just don't send us anything saying that we are... Your end files are pretty good. Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that is interesting to me, but the fact that you are filing your paper and that you maintain your status means that you have indeed fulfilled the requirement on the part three, section 16, it's long, one N, I think it is, of the municipal act, which says that you have to be, A, a nonprofit organization and B, that your, your intent is truly to always revert back the funds that you have to the organization for the programs of that organization.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Councillor Creed?
Just want to say, first of all, before, so you don't think I'm being neckpicky on my question, but that the council, our council in the past has supported the arts and theater in, in our community and I believe that our council still supports the, the theater and the arts and, in fact, we're going to be talking to you about a little thing that we want to do, but I just was wondering, do, do they require, does it audit the statements from you for, for, in filing?
They require audited statements, but an audited statement in the case of a charity or nonprofit can be audited by board members, so it is reviewed and signed by two board members and that's what is determined as our audit.
Oh, okay.
None of our accounting is done in-house. All of our accounting is done to price and comment and they have been generous enough to dwell on our accounting on a pro forma basis.
Okay.
Thank you. Councillor Bankford?
I think one year when I was on council, past, we asked for a, a financial statement and it was delivered to us.
It has been every year and for that matter, a charitable organization has all the finances for scrutiny. You just have to Google the, this charity and you will see all the financial statement that...
I, I don't think we need to review their financial statements, as long as they've still got their charitable... still got their charitable nonprofit organization number, that's good enough for me.
Okay. Any more you want to add?
As way of information and only information, a lot of people wonder how we run movies in a, how this works with our movie fund. On our grant applications that we submit, it asks for what we do for fundraising. A lot of people do bake sales, bingles, whatever it is, we do movies.
Right.
And when we put what we do for fundraising, that is what we include and it has always been acceptable from the government.
Okay, Councilor Bantry?
Yeah, I just, the question is, the silk purse is rented out from time to time for receptions, is that also part of your fundraising for the organization?
Okay. Councilor Bantry?
Well, also the silk purse is used for your rehearsals area, isn't it?
It's been a lot. And storage of props and.
But the theatre and the silk purse are under the foundation.
Right.
As a nonprofit organization, the two are part of the same whole. Councilor Bantry?
I just want to say, thank you for having such a wonderful facility for our community. It enhances our community tremendously and my family absolutely love it. We enjoy the times that we've actually participated in it as well. It's a great facility and it's neat because we don't take second fiddle to anybody in any community, anywhere in Alberta or in Canada with what we have. It's terrific.
It only brings in about three thousand people a year.
That's great. Great to know that.
Last summer, for the record, because we had Javara on our stage, we ran over ten thousand people.
Say that again.
Ten thousand people in forty-two performances.
Awesome.
And we figured that probably eighty-five percent of those are from outside of the Cardston.
And a lot of those people stay in our community and spend money here in our community, in hotels and restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. Wonderful.
Thank you, Council, for your wonderful participation. Thank you so much and I also want to tell you how much I support the arts. I think art are a very, very important part of a community. It's a little bit of a heartbeat of a community, but we also have to deal with legal matters and decide how we as council go into, maybe look at streamlining a process. And thank you for acknowledging that you were late with your application and with the supporting document. As you know, we always get a little bit nervous when we don't get things quite on time and we don't like to chase people around to get them. So that in the future will be a good thing to kind of keep in mind, that once we establish a process and hopefully streamline the process, if we can see the foundation adhering to the process, then it will make it ten times easier for us to. Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you and all the best for this season. Okay, so Council, here is something that I would recommend. You are welcome to go, you are welcome to stay, whichever you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will contact you. Thank you. This is what I would recommend we do in order to streamline the process a little bit. First of all, in the past, we always had a bylaw requirement, but nowhere in the MGA does it say that we need a bylaw. What we can do, we can do by resolution or by motion, which is the same, we can also approve the waiver of taxes for a nonprofit organization, especially a charitable organization that has a stringent process for filing with the government and a burden of proof that is fairly extensive, but on condition that the term of the, of an agreement might be respected. And this is what I have in mind and you can tell me what you think. First of all, the town could set up a standing agreement with the foundation, as the MGA suggests that we could. So the purpose of this agreement would be to cover the terms of the waiver of taxes. As you know, the legislation is quite complex and I know the legislation quite well now. They have to first of all, file an application, this year, the file an application should have been filed in two thousand and thirteen. Section seventeen of the bylaw, the same bylaw we talked in, of the MGA, part three.
That's of copter, which is.
Copter, but you also find it in section seventeen. Okay, of copter, if you want to call it this way, but it's true in the MGA also. Tells you that you can also allow, after one filing has been done for an application, that you can allow as council, three consecutive years of a waiver of the application. In other words, two thousand and thirteen, they filed it as with the town now, two thousand and fourteen, they would have a waiver of application, fifteen, sixteen.
So they'd be exempt for those years. They have to apply every three years.
So fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, sorry, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, no, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, because you always have to apply the year before.
If I may, Mayor, just a quick question to help us clarify this. Because they're late, were they not tax exempt on this tax year or did we grandfather them?
Okay, that is a question that we have to answer and first of all, address.
Were they billed? Can I ask that?
No, if I might, the bylaw stated that they would be exempt for the taxation year two thousand and thirteen.
And fourteen.
So you are now, you now have the application for the two thousand and fourteen.
Right.
Okay, so, so no, they have not been billed taxes. The application really is one year prior to the taxation.
And at the time, that council, from what I'm seeing here, just voted to keep them exempt for two, even though they could extend for three.
Right, and so if we want to streamline the process, we could extend it for three years, which is a maximum, okay? One year, you file an application, the paperwork, three years after, you don't have to. And then the process starts again. You have to, three years later, you don't have to. So if we had an agreement in place, a standing agreement, that that's a way we would accept it, in that agreement, you would, we would have to require a few things to be there. The time for the waiver application to be filed, which is by the thirtieth of September of that year, that the application is filed. The number of years of the waiver, we have, as council can decide, do we want to extend it to the maximum, three years? We need the time for proof to be turned to the town, which is according to the MGA by the thirtieth of November of each year, and the type of proof that is required. So if we could go along with a standing agreement, we're streamlining the process tremendously. There's no bylaws, no first readings, second, third, it doesn't have to go that way. We can do it by resolution. Question, Councilor Pivoy?
If we, if we extend the tax exempt status, do we get stuck with, as a municipality, with the school portion of the tax? We pay it for them, out of our pocket.
Yeah, but this does not change the fact that as a nonprofit organization, the government through the MGA allows such not to pay taxes.
Right, I just didn't realize.
But the condition is that there is a requirement of proof to be offered.
Which they have.
I'm willing to make a motion right now.
Go ahead.
That we, we.
Do you want an agreement, a standing agreement?
Do a, grant a nonprofit organization such as a Chinook or.
No, the Cardston.
Yeah, Carriage House Foundation.
Carriage House Theatre Foundation.
A three-year waiver, under section seventeen of the copter act, with proof, yearly proof of their nonprofit organization status.
Okay, do you want it to be a standing agreement so every four years it doesn't come back to the table?
Right. Well, I said three years maximum.
No, but do you want it to be a standing agreement where all the points would be in there, document that would be agreed upon through the town and through the carriage theatre, as a standing document as to file the waiver would happen?
Yes, with only proof of their nonprofit status requirement on a yearly basis.
They get that every year. They know, once they file.
So I have to prove it.
They have to prove it. And once they file, then their standing as a nonprofit organization is there. So that'd be evidence enough for us, I think.
So the proof, the proof still will have to be coming from their accountant or something as a letter to the town that, at least that much.
Right, yeah, each year.
That something has been filed.
Yeah.
And that the status is still current.
Yeah, right. If I may.
We need to have that much proof.
Right, I understand two years ago, when this was decided, there were financials presented. Is, are we now waiving that requirement?
Well, because the reason why Bill appeals, under section seventeen, they, to retain their, it's not under section seventeen.
Sixteen.
But to retain their nonprofit organization, they must file financial statements. And so they're filing their financial statements and they're, they're maintaining their nonprofit organization.
I don't really need to see that. I'm with you. Here's, here's my thinking. I love the Carriage House Theatre more than most people, but there seems to be, we have to be careful about precedent here because there's room for abuse. We just learned that they audit themselves. So if we get another organization coming to us, say in three years' time, they want the same deal, they don't have quite the reputation that the Carriage House Theatre has, we're going to maybe want a little more credible proof from the new organization, from this, these new upstarts, that maybe we're not extending to, you know, that we're not expecting of the Carriage House Theatre.
I think the fact is that Carriage House Theatre have proven themselves and I think as each one comes along, they have to prove themselves as an organization. I think at this point in time, we're okay with Carriage House Theatre because we already know where their standing is, right?
Okay, there is a wisdom, Councilor Bantry?
No, I was just kind of echoing Councilor Pivoy's thoughts, only maybe in a little different manner. You know, and I'll use the word transparency. We want, you know, we want to support the arts and support the Carriage House Theatre. And I'm thinking, you know, you've suggested, you know, streamlining the process and I'm not sure that I totally follow that, but I'm, I'm thinking as we, as we support them, it's important that we maintain, you know, some transparency in this as well, for the same reason that Councilor Pivoy suggested, but just because, you know, they're a good organization, but it's going to set precedent for anything else.
Okay, can you give a chance to Councilor Edmonds to give us this feeling? Councilor Edmonds?
I prefer the bylaw myself. I have little problem with any organization that audits themselves.
Okay.
Lots of room for movement.
Movement. Let's remember, let's remember that the Carriage House Theatre falls under section three sixty-two, one, provided that the property must be able to meet the definition of arts in section thirteen of copter, the property must be owned or leased by a nonprofit organization, used for the arts and operated on a nonprofit basis and the property must be restricted, unrestricted more than seventy percent of the time that it is used. Now that totally says it about the Carriage House Theatre. Other organizations that come to this council and ask for a tax exemption must prove themselves under that section. This is solely, this bylaw is solely for the Carriage House Theatre Foundation and no other organization in town that we're developing right now.
Marian, just, just one thing, you were talking about the auditing their own financial statements. That's a requirement under provincial legislation, it's not our, or federal legislation, it's not our, our column. So in order for them to keep their nonprofit status, they have to meet all those regulations within Alberta, so I don't know that the audit has much to do with their status.
I think what is required is to make sure that they still have the nonprofit organization and that they have filed the proof required by the government. As far as to have a look into the financial statement won't make too much of a difference, but that they have to file and that we have, we require a proof of that filing through their accountant.
There's nothing wrong with asking that.
I think that is at least something we should do.
I'd like to ask the administration, if it's legally, whether we're legally required to ask, can we legally ask for their financial statements? I would think we can.
Okay, Councilor Bantry, if you read the section properly, you will see that anything the town deems appropriate.
And that would be very appropriate.
That's pretty well the way it's written.
Yeah, because that, that's extremely, I don't know, that's extremely private.
But that's the way it's written and that's the MGA's or copter.
Actually, all nonprofits are covered.
Okay, so, Councilor Bantry, trying to make a motion there, so Councilor Bantry, your motion would be to allow for standing.
Three years.
For a standing agreement that would have the terms of the application plus three years thereafter, with the paper filed according to the MGA or to the copter, yes?
Can I just clarify? Are we giving an exemption for two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, sixteen? Or fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
I don't think they can legally under the copter.
No, no, you can. Two thousand and fourteen, okay, let me help you, it's a little bit complicated. In two thousand and thirteen, you have to file an application for the year two thousand and fourteen. Okay, so put this one away.
We're dealing with.
Then you're allowed to give them three waiver of application, okay? So no paperwork for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, does not mean no proof. It means no paperwork, but you still require proof, if that's what you want.
Proof of the nonprofit.
And I think that has been part of the motion, that they do give us evidence each year.
Yes, of them. Maintaining or retaining their nonprofit organization status.
Is that the way you want to balance?
Yes.
So you want the maximum?
Yeah.
Councilor Edmonds?
So are you doing this as a resolution or a bylaw?
This would be, you don't have to have a bylaw. You can do it by a way of resolution, but you have to have a standing agreement that would be there forever, but you need to have a motion to allow for the waiver of taxes to happen on conditions that the term of the agreement be respected.
Evidence.
Okay, so we need to think, we need a motion to approve the bylaw and we need, we need a motion to approve the waiver of taxes on condition of the agreement. So do you want two motions, two separate motions, one for the agreement, one for the waiver of tax? Would you like that better?
Can I, can I suggest a motion?
Go ahead.
Listening to all the discussion here.
And then put all in one motion.
Yeah, so I think the motion should be that you will waive the taxes for the taxation year two thousand and fourteen, waiving the requirement for the application to be due by September thirtieth of two thousand and thirteen, okay? Because that's, you have to acknowledge that we're late.
Yes, we have to acknowledge that.
So you're waiving the taxes for two thousand and fourteen and into two thousand and seventeen, and you are also waiving the requirement for the application for the years fifteen, sixteen and seventeen.
Okay.
And that is to be done by way of agreement between the Town of Cardston and the Carriage House Theatre.
Perfect.
That's what Councilor Bantry said.
But with proof of their.
Yeah, the agreement will.
With annual, with annual proof of nonprofit status as per the. With annual, with annual proof of nonprofit status as per the.
Right, yes.
Agreement.
Yes.
Quite right. And this is just, again, just information that we should be sensitive to. When the Carriage House Theater and the Silk Purse receive, which as they currently do enjoy tax exempt status, there is a bit of an added burden on the taxpaying businesses of that little city block. When they repave, and correct me if I'm wrong, when they repave that back alley, those properties plus our own skating rink are pretty much exempt in contributing financially. So those, just few other businesses remaining, they take the lion's share of that burden.
No, no, that is, that would be a local improvement tax, which would be different.
It is a property tax.
This is a property tax. I understood, though, when it was recently done, that they were exempt. Carriage House and Silk Purse did not contribute.
That was done through a grant and we did not bill any of those individual properties for that payment.
None of the businesses who are complaining.
None of them paid.
Paid a dime. Okay, great.
No, we did, we did not do any local improvement tax on that.
I'll mention that in discussion in the future.
The rumors go around.
Well, hey.
Well, Counselor P. Roy, thank you for seeking clarification. The more clarification we seek, the better informed we are, the better capable we are to make decisions. Okay, there is a motion there. Counselor Edmonds, do you want to?
Do you want to comment on?
Comment? No? Okay, so this is a motion. Graham, would you please read the motion over? To make sure that we know what we're looking at.
As close as I could copy that junk, so I went a little faster with lots of aspects of it. To waive the taxes for the 2014 taxation year, also waiving the requirement of the application to be due in 2013, and then to waive the requirement for an application for tax exemption for the following three years by way of agreement, provided that the Carriage House Theater provide proof that they have continued charitable staffs.
Nonprofit staff.
Nonprofit staff.
Okay, do you want to add those three years?
That put the tax exemption should be through 2017.
Two thousand, yeah, add the three years, what they are, 2015, 16, 17.
They're waiving the application, not the taxes.
That's a tax, the waiver of the application.
Right, yes.
Not the tax, not, yeah, it's a waiver of.
Waiving the tax and waiving the application based on the agreement.
Based on the agreement.
Yes. And I just want to clarify, is our intention to make this some kind of a recurring thing that we only just reapprove every fourth year?
If they can.
Or do we have to go through this entire resolution?
But this is why I was saying if we had a standing agreement, we're gonna have.
You will still have to go through the resolution every four years.
So there's no way to have a streamlined process?
But it cannot waive the application requirement for longer than, than three consecutive years.
But if we had a standing agreement, it would just meant that every four years we would go through the same process essentially.
Well, every year we would sit as a council and say, okay, where's the nonprofit status? We could ask that question.
Administrationally, that would be a transition to manage that agreement. Okay, anyway, are we good? Are in favor? Okay, thank you. Put this one to rest. Graham, did we work you a little bit too hard tonight?
You're not getting a raise.
I hear you sign. Okay, we are now ready to look at eight financial report.
We don't have all eight on my.
Okay, I just want to let you know that April 15, the Audit Committee will meet. And April 22, the auditors will report to council regarding the finances for 2013.
My question is, Counselor Edmonds, are you gonna be able to meet with Doug? You're not gonna be gone?
What day is the 15th? Is that?
15th, it's a Tuesday, isn't it?
It's the Tuesday prior to the 22nd.
Right.
If you cannot do it, I'd be glad to stand for you.
How do you, the Temple, like, doing?
Okay, well, I'll stand for you then. Would that be fine? I'm extra fishy.
I would suggest, Madam Mayor, that you get the questionnaire from Noel that.
That's already been submitted. It's too late.
Oh, is it? Well, if she, if she, if she read over it, she'd be more, you know, aware of what, what that was.
Well, maybe I'll be able to talk to Counselor Edmonds. Okay, thank you. Nine, committee and other reports. We have a C O report. And thank you, Marian, for giving us a chance to see how we're moving along and progressing. I like the format. Any questions for Marian regarding that report?
Just a, yeah, question. Is Lloyd aware of the increased discussions about the dogs? Is he?
On Facebook?
Well, essentially, there's apparently a lot of specific complaints and issues. Is he doing anything special this year to kind of crack down on it or same as always?
I can't speak without knowing the specifics of the situation. There is a number of dogs that he is, has a concerted effort to try to deal with.
Is council requiring Lloyd to come at C C W and talk to you about?
I think if you're talking about specific circumstances, I would prefer that you come talk to me. And if you're aware of a, of a certain circumstance, I would say, yes, he is making a concerted effort to deal with some problem dogs.
Right. Yeah, and I'm talking mostly about wild dogs specifically, so.
Well, they can run faster than he can. It's the problem.
Well, I know it. I know it, so.
Yes, he does make a concerted.
It may grow into something that this council needs to address, so, you know, just kind of be aware.
Sorry, I'd like to know what you're, what you're referring to. Is it?
Yeah, they're basically asking if we plan to do anything about the wild dogs that we currently have the appearance of not doing anything about.
Do they have any idea what's been done up to now regarding the dogs and how many we catch per month and per year? Are they aware of that?
I think they're just aware of the little pack that runs through their yard every morning.
Madam Mayor, if I can make a comment, I think this is something that should go to the administration and not be discussed here because our administrator needs to look into that situation.
Well, I think I need to ask a question, so.
That's one of her employees and she needs to follow through on that.
Right, so, yeah, and I was just bringing it up in light of the report.
His, I will just report, his main focus right now is animal control and Main Street patrol. I've asked him to, to ramp up his foot patrol to up to four hours a day on Main Street. So that's one of the areas that he's got his focus on. So animal control is always at the top of mind. And you can see from the stats where he spends the majority of his, of his time.
I mean, I understand that a lot of people are still not totally satisfied and I recognize that. And if we can do better.
Well, there's a fear of safety currently in the town.
Because of the, the wild animals?
Because people won't let their children, or in some cases themselves, walk out of their home for fear of the dogs.
Okay, I understand what you're coming from.
I would just like some specifics, Counselor.
Yeah, yeah, I'll definitely come to you.
Because there are, there are ways to place traps in people's yard and there are ways to deal with it, but we need to be specific.
The biggest problem is if you see those dogs, by the time he gets there, they're gone. And they don't move slow, they move very quickly.
But if you remember, we have a new bylaw regarding animals. And if people accept to have a trap on their yard, then it can catch them.
But once you put the trap there, they will not come.
Well.
And the, most of these wild dogs you're worried about aren't from in town.
Yeah, they all are not.
Okay, any other?
Madam Mayor, on.
Counselor Bantry?
On our C O's report, there's gonna be a meeting on Thursday, April 3rd, for the results of the shared services review.
Yes, you have the document.
Now, we are all invited for that, or we have to be there.
And it's going to be where?
At the council.
Seven o'clock here?
Oh, here?
In this council chamber?
Here in this council, okay.
I may have a problem with that. Are we gonna be able to hold a call?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Can you give us a time again?
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, that's a Thursday.
Yeah.
The report is in your, in your.
Yes.
Take some time to review that ahead of.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we are ready to go through all the committee reports. Counselor Edmonds have told me ahead of the meeting that his report has been sent, but somehow that didn't reach destination. So we will hear him regarding his report. As you could see, Counselor P. Roy administration has put them in alphabetical order.
I love it.
Thank you.
All I, I just want to let you know, I copied and pasted what you sent to me, so.
It's perfect.
Don't put anything inappropriate in what you sent to me.
And if there are typos, well, pass over them. Don't worry about them. Marian is not reviewing what we wrote. Okay, are there, first of all, any reports from Counselor Bantry on the airport? If you look at it, it's at the end of your document. It was a scanned document. It's at the end of this.
Also.
Oh, oh, there was no.
No, there's no report for me.
So your report, okay. So what is the scan one you gave? Oh, it's EMS, I'm sorry.
Yes, and I will have a comprehensive report for the airport probably next month.
Okay. I recall to a society, we had a Counselor P. Roy give us one, the audit, there was no meeting. Chief Mountain West, we have one. Chinook Foundation, the meeting was there and we have one. The college, Counselor Barfus did not fill one, but if you remember, we as council approved a grant for the study to be done. So that was pretty well what was the main item of that meeting. Community Futures, Counselor Edmonds, do you want to fill us in?
We met on March 19th and 20th in Lethbridge for a A G M and also a planning meeting. And we also did some training. Community Futures has a whole bunch of training modules that they have. And we did two of them and invited the Lethbridge Community Futures to join us. And then we sort of brainstormed for a while and find we have some of the very same problems of what they have. We, we would like to be issuing more loans, but we're in a economically depressed area in Southern Alberta. There isn't too much in the way of entrepreneurs creating new businesses. So it was a good meeting. We made some plans for the coming year. And last night, we met until 10:15 in Venture Creek and discussed our submission to Western Development. We are now on a one-year funding basis because we don't write enough loans. And this is fairly common with quite a few of the community futures in this area. So we'd like to write. We've got lots of money. We've got, only give about $760,000 out there.
Can't give it away, huh?
We have three million. So if you know anybody who wants to start a business, let me get in touch with us.
Just for my information, Counselor Barfus, no. I know that there was in Edmonton, Counselor Barfus was not at Edmonton, but I know that in Edmonton, the different chairs for the readers, for the Regional Economic Development Association, were invited to meet with Minister Hughes, Deputy Minister Hughes at the time, no, Hancock, sorry. And it appears that the message was that the focus will be on small businesses. I wondered if you had a sense, coming down your organization, that something is changing as to the way the province intend to do business, especially in regard to community futures?
That has come up in our discussions.
Thank you. Okay, so Community in Bloom, thank you so much. Economic Development and Tourism, if you had a look on your table, there is a report from Counselor Barfus. Any questions? I cannot answer them, but Jeff could.
Well, just maybe project, projected time on the investment readiness toolkit? Do we, I mean, I know it's close. Are we like, is that just ongoing now at this point?
You okay, Madam Mayor, if I could speak to?
Please.
Yeah, the goal was to do it in 2014. Part of the participation we're doing with Community Futures, Alberta Southwest and Alberta Southwest Rita, is also they're going through the same process, so we're gonna go along with them now, kind of participate with that. I see it as probably an early fall type of thing, the big first stage of collecting most information is done. And so, yeah, we should, should be coming around here by early fall.
I really want to congratulate E C Dev for the initiative because I always thought that if we had an investment kit, readiness kit, ready for investors, that it would help us with attraction. I appreciate that very much. F C S S, we had a report, the fire, thank you, Counselor Banry, was at the end. The Hallybers, we don't have any report. It was Counselor Barfus, but I don't know that I need monthly. Historical Society, Counselor Edmonds?
Their webpage is supposed to be finished by the end of April. And they have been talking to the high school art classes for grade 10, 11 to get them to design a logo for the historical society and then they're gonna pay them $50 to the winner.
Oh, nice initiative.
They received a $1,500 operation grant from Alberta Museum Association. This is the only funding they will be receiving this year.
Okay, are they intending to do any fundraiser or whatever?
Nothing I can determine.
So how do they intend to keep afloat?
They're gonna eat away the money that's been set aside for restoration of the building.
And when that's done, what's left afterwards?
Well, this, I talked to Jeff about this and I think we'll discuss this further at the meeting on the beginning of April, on the committee as a whole, because it's, it's gonna self-envelop.
It doesn't sound very promising.
No. The other thing there, what they would like to do is rather than hire two interpreters students, they would like to hire ten senior couples using that same money, which is impossible. But I could get them to understand that.
Counselor P. Roy, you can always start to beat the drum for volunteers.
That's, I can do so.
They're also planning an Easter egg hunt because the Remington isn't doing it this year.
Really?
So they're planning to do an Easter egg hunt if they convince the Chamber to provide some manpower to do it. Yeah, so just so you're aware.
Lieutenant, thank you.
There's no fundraising being done.
Okay, what does that intend to do with the car house during the summer?
They don't have a plan yet.
Okay, we have a problem here.
Can I ask real quick about this problem? You're closest to the, to the situation, Counselor Edmonds. Is there, what? Is there, what would you recommend? Like, what help do they need? Do they need, do we need a change of leadership? Do we need a parallel society?
Well, like I mentioned before, they invested $7,000 into a company that would show them how to write grants. And if they didn't get any grants within the first year, they would get their $7,000 back. Nothing was done. So, that $7,000 is gone. They still have access to the program and some names of places where they can probably get grants, but nobody's applying for them. So.
So, we need to more aggressively apply for grants to help?
Well, that's how, the only way they can survive, otherwise they're going to just eat up all this money that's been set aside for restoration.
It's a little disheartening for me to hear that.
Now, I decided on my own to go ahead and get in touch with Brad Ranger, who is a local fellow and he does the repairs at the temple. And he is going to give me a price on replacing some of the stone. We have quite a few pieces of stone on the arches. They're split and eventually going to fall off. And if that happens, then we're going to have to shut the place down. We have some other blocks at the rear entrance that are just sitting there. They're no longer attached to the building. So, that's another problem. So, he is going to give us a price on what it will cost. Then we can apply for funding, but they will only be $0.50 because all the money comes from the lotteries. And you can't use one root together, so.
Can I ask you something?
Yeah.
If there was a piece of stone that were to fall on somebody, do you have insurance?
Through the town.
Through the town.
Yeah.
Council Edmonds and I discussed this in depth. And I mean, quite frankly, were or were sent because I have represented council one past when Council Edmonds was president of the Historical Society. And things were going well because Council Edmonds was very in touch with what he could and could not do to that building. And some of the simple things that you see is the painting of the window sills on the outside. You can't do that without authorization. It's a historical building. We're going to lose our historical status.
Okay. Council Edmonds, keep us posted.
One other thing I suggested to them that they should start looking into getting back their funding from FCSS. And suggested that they should do something now and get their application in for next year.
Is, my concern is that under FCSS new rules, that will not qualify.
But then, like I said, well, how does the seniors center get funding under FCSS?
It's got to be programs.
That don't qualify on that either.
Well, we, the thing is, they need to start, at least trying. Last time, they decided they didn't have enough time to do it and quit. And was expecting me to write up the application.
Yeah. Maybe you want to ask Marion to give you the new rules for FCSS?
We, they have them.
Or do they, it's a little bit more stringent?
Yeah, but I think they can still qualify if they do some work.
If they have a program.
All right.
But the problem is, right now, they don't have any programs.
Okay, well, that's what I mean. You can't have it just for the building. You got to have a program.
Well, I realize that, but we had all these programs set up and they just shut them all down.
Okay. Well, things are not good. Maybe we need to wrap our head around that one. Okay, inter municipal, there was no meeting. Levitt, no meeting. Library, thank you for your report. Exams, Council Bowne, that you had a wonderful time. The mayors' meeting, four mayors, there was no meeting. Only meeting in April. Mayors and Reefs, I gave you a report. Municipal subdivision, there was no meeting held in March. Orsk, Council Edmonds?
Orsk, they had their regular meeting on March 5th with not very good turnout. There was a lot of communities that represented. They had a woman by the name of Rebecca Goodenough from the Heritage Historical Resources Department. And she explained how to apply for grants and what kind of grants were available, which are things which the historical society should be applying for, but aren't. They did a quick update on the South Saskatchewan Plan and they're waiting for the final information before they make any decisions on to how to handle it. Hopefully, it will not be as bad as what some people think.
And I understand they provided some feedback to the Saskatchewan, reading the minutes, I saw that.
And then, the executive meeting, which was supposed to be held on the 12th, was canceled. So, that was already done.
And thank you so much.
And I think everybody got a copy of the Orsk minutes anyway.
Yeah, they're quite good.
Remind me again, when's the South Saskatchewan deadline for the plan being released?
Normally, it's April next month sometime. That was, that was the plan.
But Orsk has, at this point, a pretty advanced draft of that, I'm sure.
Right, yes. But they don't have the final things. There's some tweeting that needs to be done to it yet.
Okay.
Okay, parks and rights. It's tonight, you have a meeting, Congress, you have a meeting?
No, I've never received any word of the meeting.
I asked about that. They only meet quarter release. They won't be meeting
You're right till April.
You're right, you're right. You're exactly right. So, I apologize.
Oh, yeah, just on that note, for the sake of this, we could maybe just write that in. Or I guess you could write that in, or somebody.
No, I will next time. I just, I forgot that they only need quarter releases.
Okay. Policy and Doc, no meeting. Farah, we didn't have a meeting. David Island, I was sick and because of the nature of the meeting, wanted to be there. So, we'll have a meeting beginning of April. RMRF, the last seminar. And thank you, Council Bowne, you attended to that one.
Thanks, Perd. I give things to Jeff.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing the document. Jeff, if you have an excerpt copy, I wouldn't mind reading it. South Grove, I gave you a little bit of what happened at the conference on March 6th and then on March 20th, we had a meeting. And that's about it for this.
Do you want to maybe report on the municipal development plan that we're working on?
Okay, the MDP, municipal development plan, I put this document last month. If you want to look at it, the night of the meeting, I watched the report and it went to last month's package. Maybe you want to go back. I'd ask Marion to make sure that it was there somewhere. She said, yeah, it was last month. Okay. Essentially, at that meeting, we had kind of reviewed the document, but we had not really moved forward that far.
I'm kind of concerned about the speed that Orsk is moving on this.
For lack of a detailed meeting?
I will tell you, we did meet, no one, and I ran in two weeks ago, maybe now. And we went through all of those policy statements that were discussed at the meeting. And we've redrafted all of those and we anticipate that they should have that document, the new document, out to the committee here shortly. But we did go in and meet and we spent an afternoon going through those policy statements.
Yeah, my concern is, before long, it's going to be summer and everything's going to shut down.
Exactly.
Service, a little bit of a concern we have regarding that. We're late starting with this, with this MDP. And yeah, we need to push along.
But it's the two months in between meetings that concerns me because the next one's next month.
Yeah, you remember, the reason for that was that his assistant was also doing the same thing for I don't know how many other communities and just couldn't fit in anymore on a schedule. You on your board, maybe you want to address that issue with them that when they take on a town, to be timely and more effective.
Yeah, like they should finish one and then begin the next one. Not work on three at the same time.
Well, that is something, if you want to address that with us, please do so on our behalf because we have the same concern as you do. Thank you.
I'll bring that up in the next meeting.
Yeah, please.
On the subject of the MDP, the questionnaire, the information from the MDP questionnaire, is that, where are we at with that? I mean, we were talking about.
That will come out as part of the municipal development plan
Right.
when it's, when it's made public.
So, will all the results be in there?
The results from the questionnaire, yes, are part of the plan.
Yes, it's part of the plan.
And that's due again when, sir?
Well, it was due a year ago. That's what we were just talking about.
That's what it's saying, it's not timely.
Yeah, we, we're pretty close now, I think, with them to putting together a final draft for the committee to review. And then it'll go to public consultation from there.
And the more input we get, the better it will be.
Yeah, but those, those surveys are part of the final documents.
Okay, you have a town council motion list? Any question regarding that? By the way, I want to thank you all for all your committee reports. I appreciate the work you, you putting through, presenting those. The more we can get directly sent to Marion, the better it is.
Once we've submitted these reports, how long does it stay in the system? Are the reports there for?
They'll stay there as long as the rest of the packet is there.
They go into the minutes, don't they?
Yes, they're part of the minutes. They're attached, yes. It's something that can be retrieved at any time, Council.
Jeff, you got to do something with your motion.
Yeah, I know. Turn it and it turns.
Yeah, it turns.
It turns.
Yeah. Don't say it to a council recruiter, Edmonds, you're using your life.
Seeing no question regarding the town council motion, let's move on. 10 questions for administration. Any questions? Council Pete?
On my town council motion list, the last item on there doesn't have any corresponding
Yes, that said a little bit of a blitza.
Yeah, I was wondering what it was referring to. I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
Oh, that was on
Lifestyle.
That was a lifestyle.
Oh, that was Lifestyle program.
Yeah.
And it's complete.
It's completely.
Yeah, that was while I was gone, they went to that program. And I guess it was, turned out good.
I would say that I represented the town and it was very well attended, extremely well attended. And delicious meal at locale. And entertainment was absolutely superb. It's probably on YouTube, I'm making a lot of people laugh. No, no, no. It was our own staff that put it on and it was extremely hilarious. Correspondence, as you can see, there's two letters from Alberta Municipal Affairs, both addressed to myself. One for the response to the letter we had sent to Honorable Vice Minister of Grievance. And yeah, it's a little bit late, but it's okay. It was on Bill 28. It was about our concerns. And the following one is on the receiving of a water treatment plan upgrade grant in an amount of $141,500.
That's terrific. I think that, I think as protocol, I think when we get these grants, I think it's really important that we express our gratitude. I really think that we should send them thanking them for that. I think the more that we show our gratitude, the more they lead towards approving our things. You know, and I'll bet you, I haven't done anything that there's not a lot of communities that send their letters of thank you. And I think that we need to. That's my feeling.
Okay, thank you. We've done that in the past.
Can I just make a suggestion then, if that's the case? Because on these MSI grants, these are, these are allocated to us once a year. And we make application for qualifying projects and we may get three or four qualifying projects throughout the year for the one grant. So, if that is the case, then I would suggest to council that you send one thank you to government. You saw my CAO report that they just announced the funding for the MSI.
Yes.
I think if that's what you want to do now, it's the right time. You thank them once a year, not every time they approve
Right.
an application, because.
Yeah, I think that's a good I think this is a nice direction for administration to use that kind of protocol.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay. So, we will send once a year. Thank you for all the money that comes back to our community. For our projects. And if we get back, we happy. All right, the Alberta Health Services. You can see, it's a committee, it's a health advisory council. There are a few people there with Marion. We kind of looked at it. We could only recognize about one person that was a former member of a council for Warner Coats. Emma Hewitt. Yeah, Emma Hewitt. It's about the only person we could recognize. I asked Marion if she knew if our clinic was made aware of that since it seems to be an opportunity for feedback. And Marion, do we want to pass that on to, hopefully, that's up to council. Would you, Council, feel that we should make sure that they got this? Because we sent, we sent a letter on their behalf and I would like them to know everything that is
I think we should.
coming our way.
You mean they didn't respond yet to our letter?
No, no, no. That won't happen so fast. Might take a while. But this is something else. This is a local council, a regional council that is being struck here and there, all over the province, where they are kind of trying to get feedback from the community regarding the providing of health services with the idea of making future improvement. But in our community, we have a private clinic that should also be involved in the discussion and have the opportunity to give their feedback. So, I just wondered if council would approve for this letter to be forwarded to the clinic?
Absolutely, I think so.
Okay, so.
My concern with this advisory council is they're already making changes in the way things are operating. They're setting up these clinics, which are really staffed by nurses. There will be no doctors in them. They'll be just staffed by nurses. And this is something that was designed by the premier herself.
Okay, Council Edmonds, this is why we took the time to respond to the presentation that was made here because we're extremely concerned for the future of our clinic under that model.
But the thing is that they're going ahead and making these changes even though the committee hasn't come to a conclusion.
You know what? We keep on sending our two-bits worth of information and how much we like our clinic and how much we want the voice of our physician to be heard.
The local clinic for our area, where's that stationed? At Lethbridge or?
No, no, no.
Carstens.
No, no, I'm sorry, the council.
We do not know.
You don't know?
It's, the Old Man River is what they've called it. So, it's a larger group geographic area.
Yeah, it's in a south
The next meeting is to be held in Tabor.
So, they throw it around.
That's all I know of this.
And we have no representation from our community?
From the town person, I didn't see any, any names I recognized.
Why? That's the question. That's a question I'd like to ask.
Well, the question might be, because there are so many people who presented their name and I don't know, I don't really remember how long it was a stroke it, but I think we presented, there was, I became aware of this through the inter-agency and is that through a different community, sorry, it's another community, sorry. So I do not know. I can't remember.
I'd like to write Alberta Health Services and say how come we have been excluded?
No, I don't think we have, I don't think we have been excluded. I think that there were applications, people could pick up an application and then that shows a certain amount of people to sit on that board, so...
I guess my question is, is this, is this, we just had this consultation with Alberta Health Services, the meetings that we had here. And then, is this, is this a duplication? I mean, are they, are they, you know, who's, who's who, you know?
Okay, can I suggest something? There is a website on the bottom. Can you go to that website, get a little bit more information? And there is a phone call. And maybe do your due diligence on that one?
Councillor Parfus isn't here, his ECDev board is looking at the, contacting the health services. I don't know if maybe they should look now to contact this advisory committee. They probably, now that they are set up, they probably would have more success going through this committee, this advisory council, than directly communicating through Alberta Health. For some of the economic development projects that they're working on for clinic expansions, new hospital, that kind of thing.
Jeff, can you let Councillor Parfus know of this? If it is something you should be involved with?
In fact, I would say that someone, maybe Andy from ECDev, would want to make a presentation to the advisory council in Tabor when they meet. Just so we know, hey, Cardston's voice is being heard there and our concerns are being brought to their attention, this new advisory council. I say, rather than, you know, get frustrated that they exist, I say we be their best friends and be at every meeting.
I'll leave it with the ECDev board and maybe there is something that we can do?
I just want to be clear a little bit here, it's not the intent of the ECDev board to be politicking right now the provincial government for health services.
Exactly, it's not the right time.
So I want to be very careful that we're not putting the board in that position. We have had some conversations with the capital planning of Alberta Health.
Which is different.
To come and speak at a luncheon about what the process for capital planning is and how the community could support that. But that's been the extent of our deliberations or conversation. I would be a little uncomfortable we're getting political with Alberta Health as far as ECDev board's involvement. That would be my position.
Okay, I appreciate what you're saying. I understand the capital, what you're talking about the hospital primarily.
Yeah, just to add, we also have a representative, Grant Walker from HHS.
Yeah.
And they're, the same gentleman that Jeff has been working with, that's coming to, to the next intermunicipal committee meeting.
Doing a presentation.
With the county and town to talk about exactly the same thing.
Yeah.
And with the politicians.
Yeah, and Mr. Walker had told us to be careful how we approach that and he told us when we met that there was a time when local pressure, if you want to call it, will be more appropriate at a certain time rather than quite right now. And he told us so.
Would I be out of line by asking if, if we get, as a council, get some information on what's happening with ECDev and Alberta Health Services? I mean, I'm totally lost, I don't even know what the discussion is.
We can probably, Jeff, speak to that.
Is it just me or is it everybody else?
Okay, Councillor Parfus, he's on today, already gave us his little report. But I think what they're doing, from what I understood, is that I have three subcommittees within the ECDev board that is looking at different area, focusing on different area of interest. One being a more tourist kind of orientation with events to be developed for the town. One has to do with current issues, that has to do with the healthcare. And another one that has to do, I remember.
The subgroups are just focused on working with the chamber to identify events, inventory events.
That's one I remember.
One is tasked with marketing the Heritage Week.
Right.
And one is looking at potential incentives for attraction, business attraction. The Alberta Health spin was just an idea brought up by the board to say, is this something of interest to the community afar? We've had a couple of business luncheons every year. Would it be a topic interesting to the business community to have an understanding of?
Yes, that's correct.
How the healthcare sector contributes in the community, first of all. And then, what the process looks like as far as capital planning and how the community can be involved. So, we have the first part kind of tied down. The second part, as far as anyone coming to speak to that, has not been an easy fish to catch. And we're trying to get Alberta Health committed to come speak to that.
Thank you.
Are we talking about a potential future hospital?
Are you lost too, Dennis?
Okay. If you, if you look at my last report on the HHS meeting, go back to February, look at what I did, I reported on that advance. So maybe you can have a refresher.
Yeah, because I don't have, I don't have any of the reports on my...
Just look at it from my last month's and there is a report that I did regarding that very item. Okay?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, the reason I brought it up is because I think with these new advisory councils, I'm sure that if we got our local council on board, a letter from them might go a long way. I know if I sat up at the big capital, Alberta Health, and I got a bunch of requests from the municipality, yeah, that's all well and good. But if I got one from my advisory council, that would, that would generate some interest.
Well, the first thing we need to understand is what they're all about.
Sure. I'm saying, let's dictate to them what they're all about. Let's give them a job that'll help us out, is a good idea.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but why don't you, Councillor Pivoy, take it upon yourself to go and look at what they're doing? Maybe report to us next time around.
I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, I think that would be a good thing to be a little bit more aware. Since you're interested in it, run with it. Anything else confidential item, there are none this time. So I need a motion to adjourn unless, thank you, Councillor Edmonds. Thank you very much, and it's 7:20, just time for you to go have supper. Thank you so much.